So this establish a form, um Kim would you see we've established a form?
We have.
Would you like me to do a roll call?
Sure.
Okay. Councillor Bedingfield.
Here.
Councillor Watson.
Here.
Councillor Wreth.
Here.
Councillor King.
Here.
Mayor Short.
Here.
Um, Councillor Sullivan is not going to be with us tonight, he just has some medical stuff.
Okay.
And Councillor Beasley, he's not been sworn in, so he's.
Okay.
Is he coming?
He's coming.
Okay.
Yeah, well see I met with him from five o'clock.
We'll figure it out, the regular.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe tomorrow. Alright, so did everyone receive the minutes for two months and any questions about them? Cause this is, um, I guess I should announce that the meeting is our special meeting for our 50th anniversary coming up on May 20th. It's gonna be a big party. And so, um, any questions about the minutes?
I'm moving the approved as submitted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, wonderful. So this.
We, we need a second.
I'm sorry?
We need a second.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion?
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any of those?
Nope.
Okay. So now we're getting into anniversary council reports. Um, there's not really been new on entertainment, we're still in online, again, online to come. And I know that, um, Kim is working on getting some type of agreement to go to them, you know, bring them the price and the date and things of that nature. So excited about that. And then, Senator Sullivans, Rand, do you have anything to, to add to this?
Yes, um, very briefly. I spoke to Perry right before the holidays, even. She, um, I think spoken to both, uh, Kim and Carla about going downstairs and finding the stuff, so, um, she'll schedule with Kim when that should happen. Go through there. She also told me, I've been thinking to go to Lincoln City Museum Historical to get pictures. And she suggested I go to Burroughs House and take a look at the Bayou, it's much more extensive.
Okay.
So I haven't done that yet, but I will.
Okay.
And then finally, um, sometime this week or next, we're gonna get together and come up with the, um, those questions that we want to pose. So people, you know, kind of get peeked about what they, what they might submit or not.
So you're talking about questions about what they know about people, they, or what they're.
Yeah, some very general and then specific, given ideas of what they might want to think about.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll, next time hopefully I'll have a draft of what I, for you guys to look at to see how it reads to you and if we should start getting it out on the website.
That's perfect. Okay, thank you. Fran, anything else? Okay. So it's interesting because, um, I actually talked to Jeff with the, uh, I think Red Minds work in the same direction. Talked to Jeff with the North, um, uh, North Lincoln County Historical Society. Cause I wanted to see what he had, I was thinking that maybe they have artifacts or something that we could have for our meeting. And they don't, uh, they, they have pictures. And then I talked to Kim, the same thing about the pictures, and she says, we have pictures. He was going to sell them to us for $10 each, but I think that we probably have enough to where we can have pictures for this display table and what have you. And so when I was on Facebook, um, I saw this woman just, um, had an article, or not an article, she had a posting. And, um, she had, she's talking about Charley Depot, and she posted this, yeah, she, she posted this picture. And so I asked her about the book and I made copies about the book, that, uh, relationship to Depot Bay. And so I have it if anybody wants to look at it. And Kim, you found that book online?
I did, I found and ordered it from Amazon before somewhere around holidays, I expected it in August, so.
Good, so I met with her and she loaned me her book and I made copies. And so I think because she posted it on Facebook, I think if we decide to ask social media for pictures or things like that, that we could probably get that. Um, we're a little concerned about making artifacts, thinking about it, because if we have artifacts, uh, we don't want them to walk away. You know, so that's a, that's kind of a concern, so I'm thinking probably that's not going to work. So that's, um, that's terrific and I'm.
Could I ask you, could I ask a question?
Sure.
You made copies just for you to read?
Um, yeah, but I can, I can definitely, we can make copies here.
Well, yeah, no, I'm just concerned we're not gonna make copies, make them available, cause that would be copyright infringement.
No, I just make them available.
Oh, good, good.
And not, there's only one copy and, um, yes, if, if anybody.
What's the name of the movie?
It's called, um, Pioneers of North Lincoln County.
Oh, okay. Has it been out for a long time?
Um, this was posted in 1951.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember seeing that at the school library, that's a good one.
Yeah, and this lady that I met, um, she is in an area called Cutter. And I wasn't familiar with Cutter, I've heard of it.
Oh, Cutter City?
Yeah, Cutter City, yeah.
Yeah, the Cutter family.
In Cutter City.
Oh, the Cutter family's still here?
Yeah, uh, yeah, Mike Cutter.
Uh-huh.
They live in, uh, and Bobby live in, uh, him and his wife live in, uh, Stonebridge.
Oh. Oh, good, uh-huh, yes.
She passed away by the way.
She didn't, Bobby did, yeah.
He's still there.
And so there's also, um, a, um, a, just a, um, museum, um, Lincoln County that's in Newport. And I have a call in to her to see what they have, but I think maybe we just have our own little pictures here, we don't have to go any, any further.
Are we sort of the computer screen up down there?
Yeah, I think so, I think so.
So, um, is that exactly what I said about going to the museum and looking? So I think we better coordinate that because we're duplicating our.
I'm ready.
I don't have very much time to duplicate things that you're doing and.
Would, would you like to, to look at the, um, museum in Newport?
That's what I was gonna do.
Yeah, would you like to pick that up? That would be good. Okay, wonderful.
The Burroughs House?
Yeah.
Is that the one that I'm looking at taking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, they're, uh, the pictures.
And, um, the, the museum, how many should, in, in town, they were saying the museum in Newport. Has parts of the heat measure boat, you think that's the thing this boat?
But it's town.
Oh, yeah, that is a great.
Long time ago, so I don't know that we would need that or spend like that.
Do the pictures of it, but that's what not artifacts of it, so.
That's right, I couldn't worry about it. Um, so, um, Kathy, have you had a chance to talk to Doris Pixie?
No.
Okay, favorite.
We sent a letter off.
I think you wanna talk about that, or is it?
Wrong.
Okay, so. So, um, in November 1st meeting, I said that I draft a letter.
Uh-huh.
And, um, I think it's really important that the city of Depot Bay approach the, um, the Confederate tribe, uh, Travis and Sluts Indians Council um, as a whole, through the chair of the council, not just the member.
Yeah.
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 So, and when I talk, pardon me, councillor, but when I, I hadn't had a chance to talk to Mayor about it today, but it appears from further research that Doris is the best person, not what we were told.
Okay.
So that, um.
I will get on that.
Yeah, so in, in line with that though, um, if, um, I mean, I think we should extend a formal invitation.
Yes.
To a 10, if, and also find out if, um, if they would like the unveiling of the sign to be at that event or separate. It really should be there.
Yeah, I'd say it should be part of our whole thing.
Well, yeah, I think so too, but whether or not the tribe wants that or not, I think it really, I mean, it's our sign.
It's our sign.
Okay, well, I think we should ask anyone, does it.
Yeah, yeah, I will, I will.
And also find out, there's been some talk about, um, uh, where the tribe wanted the sign and maybe they wanted it north title race versus in the park, but we should formally ask.
Yeah.
Cause it's been sort of hearsay.
Well, it's not a government to government.
It should be government to government, so that would be good.
Yeah.
And then, and in line with that, um, that sign has some stakes that are sort of embarrassing. And it'd be really good to get a new, a sign with corrections on order if we can, and just authorize, uh, you know, whatever cost it is to produce another sign. Um, I do have that information for you councillor, if you'd like.
Okay. So I haven't been able to hear back from somebody, but when Vaughn did come in today, he gave me another email to contact this company that originally did our sign. Cause it would be cheaper if we could have them, cause they already have a place and everything like that. Um, the total cost for the sign, which included the time that Vaughn put in, was over $3,200. Neither's I could tell, I mean, I, I don't have a quote, but we could be expecting to pay somewhere between maybe fifteen to two thousand.
Yeah, cause he got paid a thousand.
He got paid a thousand and then the rest of it, the setup and all of those fees were twenty-two forty. So, um.
It should be cheaper this time if they don't.
I would think so, I would love to say between eight hundred and fifteen hundred, but I'm afraid to say that without knowing for sure.
So maybe we could.
It shouldn't be over two thousand.
So we should authorize, can, we need a motion to authorize, um, doing that?
I'd. Yeah, if you guys are in favor of expending the funds to, to do this, which I, I, I agree, it should be done. We need, need to make that as an agenda item, cause this is just a committee, so. Well, this, this, this was okay, um, cause what, it's not necessarily council, you guys are the council and it's actually saying. It's okay to do that because it's council, obviously, we did talk about it, cause I was worried about it being agendas, but you guys are the council. Yeah.
Okay.
You're just in a special meeting.
Yeah.
It's not a committee, not, not a committee, you're in a special meeting.
Okay.
So it's still council meeting, it's just a special one.
Oh, okay.
It's just made that long, but.
Yeah.
Might as well.
So you can do a motion, even though we didn't say we're gonna make a motion to do this, it's still part of the council, so you can bring that up.
Okay, so would you?
Sure, um, that, um, the council authorize, um, the, um, correction of the Native American sign, um, and reproduction of it without the mistakes.
And, and seconded.
Do you wanna set a limit not to exceed two thousand? Or are you okay with, we would obviously come back with, you know, like, no, but do you wanna set a limit not to?
Why don't you say, um, not to exceed 2,500, I don't care, just in case costs it, should be cheaper though. Is that okay?
Yeah, I think so, I think that, um, you know.
So Joyce seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, my fault. Councillor King seconded.
Alrighty, so we, we've also.
We have a vote in.
Yes, you do. Okay, so, um, would you like to do a roll call or?
Just say yes.
Yeah.
And just like you did with the minutes, just all in favor?
All in favor, um, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, and so we've talked a little bit about, um, contacts and family fathers, um, we can definitely do that, I just don't know who they are.
We do, we have the contacts.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, um, Carla and I actually was here when a granddaughter of Depot family came in and saw the sign one day, and so Carla and I, I think her name's Stacy, have that interaction, so we will get on it and.
But I think we still need the, that, the introductory letters and the, um, so maybe putting the list together of who you wanna contact.
Yeah.
Um, but I think getting together the list of questions and sort of the, what's gonna happen to it and what they know that they can talk. I think we need to be, this is me, it has to be coherent what we're taking, telling.
Transfairing, yeah.
So, um, yeah.
Yeah.
So that should happen pretty soon.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, um, uh, councillor, do you have questions in mind?
Yeah, I've been working with, um, Perry.
Okay.
And we'll have it soon.
Okay, good.
I'll meet with her this week or next.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda is, um, food trucks. Autumn, do you have a update for us?
Yeah, I left a voicemail for Ross from Pines, because we were supposed to circle back after the first and told him he'd be interested in having a pizza. Not anything fish and chips, but pizza, and waiting to hear back from him. And then I called the, um, Grubbs lady, Grubbs' own lady, and left a message for her too, pretty detailed one, both of them, so. Where's Grubbs? Grubbs, it's one of the ones you had left a note about.
Well, there's, um, there's, there's a, there's one that does fish and chips.
No, this is the.
But not that one, and there was, there was Mo's, and then there was a barbecue place.
This is a meat one.
Okay. So that was like a, um, smudged name?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so we're waiting just to hear back from these people?
Yeah, yeah, I love them both, detailed messages, um, so hoping to hear back soon.
I think that Hearth and, um, they used to be in Lincoln City.
Of a glory place?
Oh, it's.
They, yes, they have a, oh, where they make stone. Um, private pizza.
I forgot.
Yeah.
It would be good.
That's all. Yeah, the Grubbs on is full food, pork, smoked chicken, hot dogs, nachos, so it'd be fun for us to have.
And I think we're in agreement that we need at least three trucks, is that correct?
Yeah, and she had expressed interest when you talked to her.
Yes, yes.
And Pines was interested too, they just have to find trucks that are mobile or already settled to be on their lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, um, so next on the agenda is the Beer Garden, and talked to Carly Graham, and they're, um, they're gonna do that for us, so that's good. And Kathy, neighbors for kids?
Yes, I finally talked with, um, Toby.
Mm-hmm.
And they are really excited about it and having promoting something for the kid, uh, neighbors for kids. And, um, you know, doing some face painting and some activities where the kids can create, uh, art and that type of thing, art in the park type of thing.
Yeah.
And so, and besides organizing some games and, and that type of thing, so, um, we're gonna, uh, meet on that and get together. He's gonna have, um, meet with his board and get ideas from them as well, so. We're on, on target with neighbors.
So one thing about, uh, it's not on the agenda, but we talked about it before, the, um, talking about the signs and the banners and things like that. So different thoughts about that, if we just have, I think that we would like to have this a Depot Bay thing. Um, if someone happens upon our party, right, that's fine, but I'm thinking if we just have yard sale signs, uh, in neighborhoods, they're talking basically in the neighborhoods about the party versus the signs on both sides of one-on-one.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking that might be a better way to go.
We're a lot, a lot cheaper to.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I think.
And this will have a little of the stoppage.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I was thinking maybe Chester's, but Chester says gonna bring a lot of tourists.
Yes.
I'm not so sure.
I love that neighborhood.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, it's fun.
Okay, alright. So you think Chester's in the post office?
Not Chester.
No, just, okay. The post office anywhere else?
The yards, the city hall.
Post office?
Um, and, uh, I did do the research on the temporary signs in the city, and, um, they're not permitted in the public right of way, so you can't put them along one-on-ones.
No, but we, we can get.
You put it in our individual.
You put it in your yard.
Yeah.
Yeah, my garden.
Okay.
I can say, I like the sign in my yard. You do that. Um, but they're unlimited as to how many you can use.
Okay.
Which is crazy, for community events signs. So I need to give the price of those. This is crazy.
Okay.
How many signs were you thinking?
You know, I don't know, I'm thinking in one of, in every neighborhood, so we have one in Littleville Cove, and you have the back forty, you have, um, Stonebridge, you have where we live, the hills of Depot Bay.
Villas.
North, um, North Point.
Villas.
North Point, South Point, um, yeah, over, over there, I think you may have ten or fifteen.
Collins.
Yeah, she had one of those signs.
I'm sure you're gonna find you want more than ten.
Yeah.
You're gonna want at least fifteen.
Okay.
I'm sure yard signs are not permitted at Littleville Cove, but you can put it out at recreation center on that corner there. Cause a lot of people will read every word of that.
Oh, that's true. Might want to check with the H O H's to find out whether they are.
It's not Stonebridge.
Stonebridge.
Oh, Stonebridge is okay.
Depot Bay, Hills, and then Littleville Cove. Those are four.
So I just, I just think that would be a better way than.
I agree.
Yeah, okay, I guess.
Um, so when Kathy was talking about kids' own, I started thinking, well, are they gonna set up in the gazebo? And then I started thinking, wait a minute, what if it's raining, we need to worry about having tents?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have, we have all that story, or we, Brady, Brady knows about tents, we, I don't know if we own a bunch of them, but I think other organizations own tents.
The Chamber has one of them.
Oh, there's some awnings out here in the barn that, the, for the, I don't know if it's Fleet of Flowers or, uh, Sand Bay, cause there's a few out here.
Will they be able to use the.
Chamber stuff.
For this.
I don't know how big they are, we have to, to see, if you, you want big awnings, you have to go through the tent and awning company that, right, they used to be in South Beach, I think they're in that valley now, like, uh, Carals.
I thought. We're meeting with the Chamber on Thursday.
Right, okay.
So I have.
Yeah, they have the contact, because they just went through all that at the Sand Bay.
Yeah, between what we have around here, we shouldn't have to. Right, that for just a three.
Cause I was thinking the gazebo we talked about, so we're gonna put the screen with all the pictures on it.
Oh, yes, so maybe that's not a good spot for the neighbors for kids, we should find out having some kind of a tent, or I wonder if they have it.
I'll, I'll find out what they're.
Just in case.
Yeah, 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 I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Toby about that as well.
And I don't know how we at a tent, what we'll be looking at really, if we're gonna.
We're gonna need one, or for some covering of musicians, which we need.
Yeah, that's electrical.
Yeah, we get a stage, yeah.
Okay, so stage, one for neighbors for kids, or stay might be able to ride their own.
That's probably good, huh?
Kid, well, we can.
Probably a place that's ready for people to just get out of the, out of the rain. Yeah.
Time like pouring?
Yeah.
So like three minutes over here.
We're gonna go down to the park early as soon as Joyce gets back and, uh, lay out a schematic about where we think, you know, food carts go here, that type of thing.
Great.
We'll come back and.
So we're thinking gazebo is where we're gonna show the picture, we'll have, is the screen set up and, and there's, there's electric there, right?
Yes.
So that's perfect, okay, so that's taken for our.
Yeah.
Mr. Rand, did you?
No, nothing else.
Nothing else, so. That's great. So, um, you know, I felt like we had a lot of time for this, um, and also this January, you know, I'm like, wow, there's really something else. Um, okay, so Lindsay T-shirts, would you, you have anything to?
I don't have anything new, it's just, um, same, I can review the pricing if you want, but.
Um, that's okay.
There's nothing new.
That's, I think they're, they missed in the minutes, so.
We do have a copy of the PDF now, I saw, and we emailed it, so we actually pass the logo.
Yes.
That we can use to price that shit.
Did you, did you send that out?
I, I sent it to her, so she can show it to the, to the people with the.
Yeah, I, I.
You sent it to me. I like devil.
Yeah, it's good that we have that, cause that's something you can use for any kind of, like.
Whatever. Do you guys want to let this one sit?
And so the, um, so Ori.
What's that? There's somebody over there. We don't know.
Are you treating?
So Orianna tried to do this, and they have been very.
This is Tomar Koosh, that's.
I don't know if it's the holidays or whatever, I sent them the logo, there was some giving them the down, so I don't have much.
We'll circle back around.
Circle back around, yeah. So, um, did you want to have the next meeting, like, uh, first meeting February, would that work everybody?
Can you help me, do you need some of the other part to do your schematics?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I'll call you.
Are you a schematics girl?
If, if we have more than four councillors, then we need to notice, which is not a big deal, we just need to notice it. And say y'all will be down there, so if y'all wanna go.
Yeah, I, I won't, I'm, I'm gonna be out.
No, 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 we're gonna do. Do we agree?
Oh, I see.
Does it, does it agree? Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying if more of you wanna go, um, or, uh, Councillor Sullivan or Councillor Beasley wanna go, we just have to make sure that I know, cause we need to notice it's horrible.
Okay.
Which is not a big deal, it just doesn't take very long.
Alright, so does anybody have any other thoughts about what's going on?
Is somebody in charge of gathering of the photos and getting it in the right format?
Um, I think.
Me and Brady will work on that.
Great.
But I do have something to show, listen for you guys, you remember?
Yes, I do.
Get ready. Oh, wait, can I do it from here? No, I don't think I can, you have to share.
Uh, I'm not sure, so go through.
Share the content right there.
Right there. Share content.
I'm gonna see if I can do it. I'm going to, well, say I can't, cause.
Oh, there's a sharing key. Did you see the sharing?
Me second, guys.
Oh, okay, that's, yeah, there we go, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, here we go.
All this, all this.
We're sharing.
Okay, it's going up.
Okay, so, and I was in the office this weekend and I was going through some old mayor's correspondence files, and I discovered something. This is what I discovered. Is it? Is it up? It's, it takes a few minutes, seconds for it to start.
I'm muted.
Oh, I'm not though.
Hang on. Let me turn this. Turn that off.
Yeah, turn that down. Still feeding back from the Zoom.
Yeah, wanted you guys to hear it.
There, I muted it.
Did you get it? There we go. One more. Let me stop. So, okay, I'm gonna go back on mute.
We do something like that for the rest of the year, right? You know, give information out while everybody's gathered for parties, and here's pre whistle, you know, there's emergency preparedness committee, and here's our, um, here's a list of to-do items, so, and we're gonna have a, rather with lists combined, things, not have everything so separate. Cause that's a good, you know, good place to kind of get attention. Maybe have a, um.
Well, we're already going, we've got everything scheduled for January to have that.
Yeah, but it doesn't hurt to repeat.
Exactly, I love it.
But have an example kit, so just kind of keep, um.
Yeah, keep it in their thoughts.
Yeah.
I like that idea. We could have like a city information move that you go. There you go. Where we have all kinds of information. Oh, I love that. Yeah. Cool, yeah.
Let's give the pictures.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, guys, it is six o'clock. Can you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Happy New Year and welcome to our January 3rd. City of Depot Bay. Kim, um, would you please call the. Okay. Councillor Bedingfield. Here. Councillor Watson.
Here.
Councillor Wreth, here. Councillor King, here. Councillor Short, our Mayor Short, here. Councillor Sullivan and Councillor Beasley. Okay, we have a forum, so we have anything ready to go here. Um, are there any changes or additions that we'd like to make to the agenda?
Okay, um, okay, I guess we've gotta go right into our administration of votes. I guess I'm at the top here.
Oh, you want to get this?
Yes, you are. Where do you want to do this?
Please do it right for me.
How did you like me? What? Have you done before, you can do it right where you're at.
Okay. Okay. Actually, I'll stand to the side so people can see you, not me.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. So, repeat after me, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, I, Kathy Short, Kathy Short, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And will faithfully and honorably demean myself in the office.
And faithfully and honorably demean myself in the faith of office.
Of Mayor, City of Deepo Bay.
Of Mayor, City of Deepo Bay.
To which I've been elected to the best of my ability.
To which I've been elected to the best of my ability.
Wonderful. Okay, yay.
I'm in.
Yay.
So you sign this, I would like you to sign one of the blue pen, please.
I've got a blue pen right here.
I don't know. Sign right there and, um. Everybody that's been sworn in, if you want a copy, let me know.
There first.
Is that word really green?
It is green and the cap card gave, that doesn't sound right, does it? The, the card escaped, so I'm gonna use the card escaping.
Okay.
Okay, next up is Rick Beasley.
Rick. Okay, uh, why don't you come over here as well, just so the angle, so they can, people can see you and not me.
The camera.
Good, good idea.
Is he in the camera?
Yeah.
Okay.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Rick Beasley.
I, Rick Beasley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I report, that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And will faithfully and honorably demean myself.
And will faithfully and honorably demean myself.
In the office of council member, position number four, City of Deepo Bay.
In the office of council member, position number four, Deepo Bay.
To which I've been elected to the best of my ability.
To which I've been elected to the best of my ability.
Wonderful. Welcome aboard. Okay, you wanna sign here?
Absolutely.
Now you're seal, sign, seal the delivery. Would you like a copy of this when I'm done? Otherwise, we put these in your file, because you all have files.
Sure.
Okay, I'll make sure you get a copy. Okay. Okay, Council Rec. Uh-oh.
Oh, okay. Would you like, would you want me to trade places?
No, no, no. Can she be seen?
Yeah, you can be seen.
Do you want to move it this way, Pam?
I think she's okay.
Is she okay? Okay. Council Rec, would you raise your right hand? I, Fran Rec.
I, Fran Rec.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Um. Support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And will faithfully, faithfully and honorably demean myself.
And will faithfully and honorably demean myself.
In the office of council member, position number six, City of Deepo Bay.
Council number six, council number six, Deepo Bay.
To which I've been elected to the best of my ability.
To. Which I've been. Which I've been elected to the best of my ability.
Right. Wonderful, welcome.
Thank you.
Yay.
Thank you.
Go in for another round.
And we will, um. Swear in the hour of, uh, must be. Okay, we have consent agenda, have reviewed everything on there, the, um, minutes from the Deepo Bay budget maintenance meeting, uh, are transivable. And our, uh. I guess that's it, running for reports. Are there any corrections, additions, or questions on the consent agenda? Can anybody approve the consent agenda for the present?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved, been seconded to approve the consent agenda as we've presented. Are there any further discussions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think the recorder's on.
You're close. All righty, thank you. Uh, we've got committee reports, emergency preparedness, do you wanna go ahead and start with that, everything?
Um, the only thing that I can, um, say is that we're ha, we're having our meeting on Friday at four thirty. And at that time, uh, agenda will before, before that agenda will send out, but that's the next meeting that we have.
And we are making headway on our preparations for the emergency fair on January twenty eighth.
Yes.
Um, I mean, really excited, I'm hoping we can really get a lot of people interested and. So the city hall? It's gonna be at the committee center and, and we've got Jenny Jemares coming from two to four to give us updates on, uh, her activities and what she has presented for our, um, getting prepared.
Is that, could it be the normal time with the meetings, four thirty? Or is that just?
Well, um, this particular meeting is four thirty, that's just the best time that all of us can be. Um, you know, so with our schedules, um, um, that just. It, it may be Friday at four thirty, but I think this will be determined if we can have it on a regular basis with sometimes our schedules.
I, I can't do Friday, I have some work, but, yeah, hopefully I can make it.
Okay, so I just got confused though, I'm sorry. So that the emergency preparedness fair is on Jan.
Saturday.
Saturday.
Saturday, January twenty eighth, uh, from two to four.
Well, it starts, we're gonna start it at noon, actually, uh, because we're gonna have like the communications trailer in there, uh, we're gonna have all kinds of information for people and we're going to, um. Try and, and get people, um. Interested in getting prepared and, and that type of thing, so.
So, Jenny Mars is there from two to four?
Two to four, yeah, but we're gonna have setups of our own from the city and information to, um, to give out to folks. And we're gonna have samples of dried food and, and that type of thing.
Okay.
Send me a poster or another.
Yes, and I came to working on that bandy, Kim, you can update us on all of that?
Well, we just need to get the final details and one of them is making sure that the emergency preparedness knows that we're going to be doing the go-bag, the cat and dog evac packs, and then we talked about the go-bag being more like a family one, oriented one, so, um, but I'll look at some of those, so those will be like dropping away.
We'll have more information for you on Friday.
Yeah.
We, until, until we get the final blessing, I haven't created a poster yet.
But we will be, yes.
Okay, harbor restoration, Jack, do you have any updates for us this evening?
Uh, yes, Mayor, um. Bring everybody up to date, excuse me. We're now in the permitting phase of the process, which could take anywhere from nine to twelve months. Hopefully, we can do it quicker than that, but we're, that remains to be seen. A joint permitting, uh, application has been signed by the city and sent to, uh, P and D Engineering for submittal. The joint application is for the Corps of Engineers, the Oregon Department of State Lands, and the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. An additional okay is needed for city land use review and approval, and this will come from the planning commission, probably next month or in the next couple of months. Currently, the two point eight million that we've already received in funding must be spent by, uh, twenty twenty-six. Uh, requests for an additional one point five million is being sought from federal and state legislators to whom funding request letters have been sent, and the additional funding is needed to cover inflation material and material costs over and above the standard contingency costs in the engineering design cost and estimates. And also the, an additional hundred and sixty-six thousand plus for P and D Engineering to fulfill the post-bid engineering approval and sign-off requirements of the technical specifications. This was not included in the original contract with, uh, P and D Engineering. The steering committee has also been in contact with the Oregon lobbyist in DC, asking for his ideas and recommendations on funding. And pretty much that's where we are at this point, uh. It's unlikely that, um, any contractor would be willing to bid on the project if, knowing that the city doesn't have the funds on hand to get right on it and start work. So that's why we're working actively and securing additional, the additional funds needed and, uh, get this, uh, project going, but the permitting is, uh, is absolutely necessary before it can get done. Any questions? I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Well, Jack, I just wanted to mention also that we're, we test our grant writers with the task of looking for additional grants for us as well.
Yeah.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Jack Rick Beasley, thank you for the great work you're doing on that committee, I've followed you and, uh, I am impressed, but.
You're welcome.
I would like to, uh, I, I, I'd like to find out if there's some kind of middle ground here. Uh, from what I hear you say, you're, you're requesting another million and a half. We don't know if that's, you know, we're gonna make that. Uh, there's, uh. Grant writers at work, but can this project be toned down to the two point eight million dollars? And we just move forward on a two point eight million dollar project, get it done, and then get back in the game for more money?
Well, part of the problem with that is cost, um. One of the big, uh, cost factors is once you bring a barge in with a crane and everything to do all the uh, dissembling and pulling of the old pilings and then installing new pilings, if you break the project up into sections, you're gonna have additional, um, costs for, um, manpower, material, and that sort of thing. Um, what we prefer to do is to move forward, get the additional funding if we can, and if it's, it's, if, and additional funding absolutely cannot be gotten, then we're gonna have to make a decision, okay, okay, which docks must be replaced and which docks can wait a little longer. Remember, we're dealing with seventy-year-old docks and pilings.
Right. Any other questions for? Okay, um, did you have anything from the harbor commission?
Um, yeah, I'll speak for the harbor commission. Also, uh, the harbor commission was dark in December, so we won't have a report now until, uh, February meeting.
Oh, okay, thank you. All righty. Thank you. Um, okay, we've got, I don't believe Parks met, so there's no report from Parks. Wendy, Judy, would you like to give us a report this evening?
Yes. Actually, rather than giving you a report, uh, I would talk to your comments and feedback on our proposal to give you a written report every month. Uh, and it'll be available if you have any questions on it. Kit has expanded the planner's report, so there will be so much more information, it's so helpful. And by using that as the, as our report, it will provide very consistent information to you every month, plus you'll have a record to look back on for any follow-ups if you want to do that. I personally love the idea.
I agree.
Same, yeah, we like it too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, and the other thing I like to point out is that, uh, the commission would like to have a joint meeting, uh, with the city council at your convenience to, uh, discuss mutual goals for twenty twenty-three.
Oh, I know, thanks, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll work on that for you and get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy, I appreciate it.
Should we set that meeting up, Brenda?
We can.
Yeah.
Do, do you wanna do it, um? Let's see.
Judy, did, do you have a preference?
I have no preference, uh, but if you, let me know what your preference is. We're meeting next week.
Okay.
And I can share the date, the proposed date with the rest of the commissioners and see if it works for you.
Well, actually, keep it in January, the seventeenth meeting?
At our meeting or their meeting? Either of those two I think would work.
I can't make it to their meeting next week.
Okay. Yeah.
I'm out of town.
So just make it at our next meeting?
It's on January seventeenth would be our next meeting?
I.
Yes.
I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about this, our meeting's pretty packed, and, and I think this warrants a lot of discussion. You know, it's, it, this is kind of setting the stage for where we wanna go and kind of, and updates, or zoning code updates and stuff, and I think it's nothing else, it's a bit brainstorming, I don't think we'll provide decisions, but at least to have that discussion.
Right, well, it would be my recommendation that we would start the meeting at five. You know, I, I like a work, um, session type of thing for the joint meeting, and then have our regular meeting afterwards, if that's available.
I hear what Fran's saying, though, like, give it some space and not tack it on to other meetings.
Right, I, okay, okay.
I like that idea, so then we have a little bit more.
Yeah, I'm, I don't care, I mean, yeah, that, either way at this point, but, um, if we can schedule separate one, if not, I'm okay with an hour to start, we might need a few little minutes.
Um, would you have a preference?
I do not. I just, I just don't want to overburden you all, so that you end up having a four or five hour meeting.
So how about, uh, how about our normal meeting time and just on a coffee?
Just on the seventeenth, I'd like to week one, or the twenty-four?
Yeah.
The twenty-four, the thirty-first or something like that.
Oh, okay, you did like the twenty-four.
I think it's the twenty-four.
Oh, I'm asking on the twenty-fourth.
Oh.
Okay.
What about the thirty-first?
Yeah, that would work. Just work, thirty-first work with everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Council Beasley?
Yeah, fine, thank you.
I'll take that back to the planning commission and get back to you next morning, so there's gonna be a report back to you at your next meeting, if that works.
Okay. 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 Should we say thirty-first at six o'clock?
Yes.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, if that is not available for the planning commissioners, maybe they can suggest a different meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Is that okay, Judy?
That'd be great, thank you so much.
And do you want a meeting or a work session? Do you want an official meeting or do you want a work session?
I'd prefer a work session.
Work session.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much. And seminar enhancement, anyone for seminar enhancements this evening? You ready, baby? Okay, wonderful. Uh, are there any public comments this evening? No public comments, okay, we're moving right through here. Um, we have the Houseless Advisory Committee formation, um, can you read some changes to that? Do you wanna go over that for a little bit, a little bit more with this?
Right. Right, the changes that I made were do, um, basically lower the, uh, maximum that we were looking at, if I remember. Um, we can always come back later and look for more. Um, but if you look at number, item number four, it's just up to five members with one councilor to serve the president, so. That's, that's basically what the, the recommended change is.
Are there any questions or comments to?
Oh, we already have one.
Yes, one. Two volunteers.
We have two volunteers, three?
Yeah, I heard from another one today, he's a resident, he said he would love to participate and he's asked. Okay, okay. So are we, excuse me, go ahead.
Okay, please, Fran, hold on.
Oh, I just wanted to know, we're gonna put out a notice like we do for all committees, asking people to apply?
Right. Right, we actually have a number of vacancies in our committees and commissions, so, um, I'm working on that push, which would include this commission, supposing, you know, should the advisory should be.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, uh, if we had three people on there, they could meet, right?
Right.
But, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think it's great that we're moving forward on this. What I would like to, uh, see this committee do is hit the, hit the ground with a plan. And that plan would be, let's see what other people are doing.
Oh, yeah.
Newport has just adopted a gray ordinance, Walworth took a look at this model ordinance and adopted it, and it's sim, and it's basically, uh. We set up zones where you can camp where you can't.
Right, that's all gonna be part of the committee's task.
Of course.
We do need a councilor volunteer to be on the committee. Council Beasley, do you need a councilor volunteer?
Well, do we really, I mean, can't we just have a committee do this?
To maybe.
We, we can, but it's important for the council to be involved in it. It's up to your.
I agree.
I know, you've already kind of adopted it. We, we can, but it's important for the council to be involved in it. It's up to your, I know, you've already kind of adopted it.
I'll take it on and, and go with it. Maybe the council lays on, because I am serving already on the Lincoln County.
And that, that makes sense, you know, because she does that, but.
And I have been doing a lot of research on this.
Excellent. And you, can you tell me if we have a committee going, can we be part of that $1 million grant that has come into Lincoln County?
Right, we already have that.
Okay.
We've got an inter-agency agreement coming before council pretty quick here to be all part of that. So we'll get y'all caught up on a little bit. We've got a lot going on. And, okay, so I need a motion to adopt resolution number 533-23 as read, or I'm not gonna read this into the record, as we sent it to you on file here, so. Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 533-23 as recorded. Is there any further discussion on the resolution? So. All papers stay on? Aye. Any opposed? So what I would like to do, if it's okay. Counselor, Beasley, any?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Um, I, I would like to contact these two people. We'll get them before council, get them approved. That would give us three, which is within the forum, and we could get started on this. And I have already, I'm so excited. Kim and I toured a facility in Lincoln City called Pepe and Cam's. It is a wonderful, wonderful organization. They have got a building almost completed. They're hoping to complete and have it up and going in February, possibly March, or, or so. What's gonna happen is there's gonna be room for 69 people there. It will be room for families, room for men, and room for women, all set aside. There's group cooking areas and of course, all the facilities that you need to. And it's kind of, it's a wonderful one. I think the people that we met were just inspirational. This program is throughout the state. They've got lots of locations in Portland. They run up in Seaside. And so I'll get, I'll be getting more information as we get the committee going, but I asked very point-blank, could we partner with them? And they said, yes, definitely. It will cost us money. We will have to budget for it and we will have to really figure out how we're going to help with this, but yes.
Well, I have two questions, actually. One is, where is that Lincoln City?
Do you know where the Samos is?
Yes.
Okay, it's right next to it. It's kind of behind it, right? It's kind of behind the Samos area.
Yeah.
There's, there's.
The county bought the building for them.
The city bought it.
The city bought the building.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know, we'll see six.
Okay, my other question, I noticed in the planner's notes that there is a project going on in Little Whale Cove, and I wonder if that can be tied into your committee's work. Oh, it's not anymore. Let's see, it says on November, is I reading from the staff report in our, how did, on November 22nd, staff confirmed that the housing authority of Lincoln County proposes to develop a 12-unit affordable townhouse project at Track D of Little Whale Cove Plan Development. I don't know, it just seems like it potentially could tie into this.
Judy, what they told Kit at one point in time is that they intended it to. Oh, do you wanna come?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Judy, thank you.
I don't know if this is still the case. I, I get the sense that this is still pretty fluid and nothing has been presented to Kit formally yet. But what he was told at one point in time is that they intended that to be for people who were left houseless as a result of forest fires. And what we don't know is if they intend to allow other uses when there isn't such a need.
It's all conceptual at the moment, no? In the top stages, there's nothing formal.
So, but this houseless committee is really for?
Policy?
Excuse me?
Policy?
No, this is more for unhoused people, more transient people, rather than people looking for affordable housing. Because at least in my mind, maybe I'm not having it right, this is, you know, for people who are basically camping. So whether or not they'd be able to afford affordable housing would be a different issue, so.
It, this is more for the homeless situation.
But like, anything we could do to, because available as well.
That might be something that the planning commission could look at. So when you come back to your work session, they could be looking at.
Right.
Ways, you know, it's part of the planning aspect, is not just planning where, that might be, and the types of things, what we might do.
Yeah.
And where, so.
It would be, it would be a good idea to make sure that the planning commission gets at least minutes of your meeting, so that they're aware.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Is there a planning commission member necessarily on, I can't remember?
No.
No, not specifically.
But everybody will be involved in this one, because it's gonna, it's gonna take the entire community to come together, because it is going to be affecting everyone. And this is something that the state has dictated, is that we must do this. And so I will be soliciting all, all of our residents to help out with this, with ideas and how we need to go forward. So, but I'm doing research on the backside to try and go forward, to get, get going on it, so.
Mary, you're doing a great job on that, too.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so we'll get back on that one. Okay, I'm excited for the emergency preparedness committee. Chris, come on up. And let your resume, you're very active in the community and and I appreciate your enthusiasm for wanting to help us, because this is another issue I'm passionate about, because I totally believe in protecting our friends and neighbors. And so I'll give you the floor on what you're looking for and how we.
I'm glad you had a chance to see my application, because I think hopefully I did a good job of kind of outlining. And some of my interests just rests with, I wanna know someone for me in a place where I live, you know. And when we had the Labor Day fires, it was quite a wake-up call, for me, anyway. And it was shortly after that, I think that I got involved with our safety committee at Little Whale Cove and had the opportunity to just learn more about what we're doing in Little Whale Cove. And I thought, well, maybe here's an opportunity to see what's going on in Depot Bay, how, if, anyway, I could contribute. And I think I quite accidentally got connected with Joyce, because I had Tracy Flowers down in Newport Grace Winds. They were, I was storing a lot of their material, their cloths and things for the warming shelter. And there, I was told, she told me they weren't gonna be doing that anymore, and that we could find something to do with all those costs. So I just started calling around. People, you know, Newport and, you know, Lincoln City, and Joyce happened to contact her. And it, it turned out that it didn't work out, because someone maybe kind of took the punch to get them. But I'm hoping we can all share, you know, I mean, resources should be shared to the community. But I'm very curious to see what Depot Bay's gonna do and how, and what I can help.
Oh, that's wonderful. Any questions for Chris?
We're available Friday for. I have, I volunteer with hospitals, and I'm taking a two-year teaching course starting in January, and I do master gardening. So I will fit this in somehow.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, thank you, Chris.
Okay.
And she talked to you about parks for master gardening.
Oh, oh, yes, absolutely. We need to do more.
Did you have a question? Yes, please, Judy.
Christine, first of all, I'd like to thank you for coming forward. I looked at your resume and it's obvious you're gonna hit the ground running, and this isn't gonna be a, a journey of personal discovery. You actually know what you're talking about.
I hope I do.
It's, and I'm gonna be very grateful. As a city councilor, what I, I think I'm gonna look for in committees is for you folks to provide solutions to critical problems that don't cost money. And I think that emergency preparedness is exactly the place that we can do that, especially if we can get the community excited and involved. And I did a, I wanna show you something here. This is a headline from a newspaper, a local newspaper. Depot Bay committed to prep for Big One that came out. So people are, are looking to this committee, to this, and, and I think that among all the committees that are out there, this is probably one of the most important ones, because people are just completely blind to what's gonna be left after, you mentioned the wildfire, and I think that's absolutely appropriate, but also the, the earthquake, Canada earthquake, and the facts and figures that are behind that indicate that we're gonna be in terrible shape after this happens. So I have a question for me, for you. Do you carry an emergency go-bag?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Do I have one in the house?
I'm so glad to hear that. And I would encourage some committee work that would get every single person in this community, plus some way to get our hotels involved in this. Because if we can give ourselves a couple of extra days after this happens.
Actually, we need six weeks.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I think, too, that it would be helpful to know, and, and it's, I think this is already going on, to kind of communicate with other cities how they're handling things and, and kind of working in that regard. So that maybe we're not duplicating effort, you know, and we're more coordinated.
Let me ask you, just ask one other question. Would you agree with me that these two events every year the state puts on? I think one is, is the Cascadia Rising, and the other one's called the Gray Oregon Shakeout. Have you heard of those?
Yes, I'm familiar with, yeah.
Do you agree with me that those would be good things to incorporate into our city's activities? We haven't done that so far.
Yes, we did.
Didn't we?
Absolutely. Absolutely involved in their lives better. Was it why, how did you interact about this? Unavoiding issues, but we did participate. The three of us were.
Yeah, we were the church.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about getting the entire community.
Right, we want to do that.
Yeah, I think, I think on, on whole central coast, I think everybody's kind of working toward that. And I just, I guess I would be concerned that we're just not staying, not spinning our wheels, but maybe duplicating effort when we maybe learn or coordinate with maybe another community close by. But I'm just, like I say, I'm just kind of happy to, to learn and help if I can.
I look forward to you to be a leader on that committee.
No pressure.
I can be part of the leadership, yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And we all have ballots. You have a ballot there, someone, before you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need to fill out.
We, we didn't get this time, although we love the creative way we approached last time.
There was a piece of paper.
Uh-huh, we got that. At least the extra.
Well, sir.
Oh, everybody voted already?
Would you press this?
I think I put that to sign on me. I know, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. If that's first. Six yeses. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And maybe we approve the, the position for, actually, the, the, I'll second that.
It's been moved to second to accept the ballots as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? All papers stay on?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And we go get you going on Friday.
You guys work hard, too, I know.
They do.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Not yet.
Well, you, you'll be, you'll be good.
Okay, and your new business, we need to elect a council president. At this time, I would like to nominate Joyce King as our council president.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All papers stay on?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right.
You go again.
I know, I know. It's great to have you as a backup. Um, okay, capital improvement projects approvals. Um, Brady, I'm gonna put you in charge of that one for us, if you're good.
So, um.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, this is my.
Oh.
Put your documents up there.
I think we talked about.
Does everyone have a chance to read?
Yeah, please, you're.
Okay. So, that's part of that.
Yeah.
I think that's the best.
And also.
Yeah, so we got quotes for the harbor, they call it a shack, but it's the office down there. We're getting a bit bigger one. We got quotes for, for just a little bit. So we, we got quotes for, it's a local company out of Salem that are built, and they're similar in touch yet. But we did do some research for size, and we'll be doing some of the sheet rock in as far as the windows. So we're, we're gonna have it designed, so there'll be a window for folks when they need a mortgage and paperfield and things like that. You don't have to go into the building. They'll be able to pay outside through a slight window, unless they wanna come in, it can. But the, the area's gonna have more storage for emergency containment, spill response, things like that, that the other building just doesn't have room for. And so due to the fact that it, it has to be on a skid because of the cement agreements and old deeds from Depot Bay years back in the twenties, for the harbor front, if you can't have a building over four feet at mean low tide. So in other words, we couldn't get a permanent building with footings in, in, in that area where this is gonna be, where the curve one is. So we have to have it on a skid, it's meanest. It can be moved. But it is gonna be appropriate size, and we'll have the, the phone line and the water and everything still down there. We're still gonna have the restaurants at, next to the dock side, the Robinson Restaurants will still be there. So, because there was word that we're gonna have restaurants at that end, but we have like porta potty, but no restaurants at this time.
Yes, ma'am. So I was looking at the bids, and I, I didn't know what some of the materials were. So I looked up the left siding and the 20-year expected life and the cement. I was wondering why we might not want like hardy plank or some cement-based. The, that.
That type, yeah.
Yeah, and that might, that's why the other one was like $2,000 more, but the expected life was, you know, probably painted and maintained, you know, up to 50 years. And that, I don't know if that's worth spending the money upfront now to get a lot more life out of it?
Yeah, well, we, yeah, a lot of it was the delivery to, where we could pick this up ourselves. We're, we're looking to maybe we'll get it with our trailer rather than have it delivered. If we have to have it delivered, it's, it's only in Salem. Some of the other companies are so far away, it costs several thousands of dollars just to deliver it. But we could look into the siding, the concrete siding, if we, we can, we can always upgrade that. That's something that we commonly do, some of our outbuildings. We did Little Whale Cove Pump Station, the already planned, the crew did that. So it's not that difficult to upgrade. But the, the siding they have on there is the new version. It's not like the old-fashioned LP siding that grows mushrooms and stuff. It's, it's, it's pretty durable. I think it, it would last, in my opinion, but I like this, the layout of this one in the floor structure is, has more integrity, in my opinion. But.
It fits within our budget.
Yes, it fits within our budget. But we, we can always, you know, if we have problems with some of the siding, just keep maintenance. And then if we do get, I, I'm not a big believer in concrete siding myself. We have, we have upgraded stuff, rather than, well, we had a company come and do the city hall, but like, we're gonna end up doing the crew with a good bust one. It's something that we can maybe pull off.
Is it worth going back to Betterville Arms and ask them if they have an option of this?
Yeah, we could do that, yeah, yeah. I mean.
I don't know. It just seems to me we're being a little bit short-sighted, even though it's a few thousand dollars more, it's just, you know, this.
Yeah, we might look into it, sure. Yeah, I can.
I mean, this is just me speaking. I don't know what the rest of the council thinks.
Yeah, I'm supportive of a great idea. I have a separate question.
Sure.
And it has to do with location. And it has to do with location, so I was looking at that area. And what is the rowing club?
Building?
Building, and are you gonna be kind of encroaching in that area?
So that, the kids zone has the rowing club that was agreed from the council and stored down there.
Okay.
From the council motion, back in like twenty seventeen, I believe. And we store the city stores, they paid for the building, but we allowed it on the property to store the rowboats, but they really haven't been used for several years, probably since it was installed. I have yet to see any boats kind of on there. But that's due to maybe staffing, COVID, fire, you know, wildfire, everything just kind of trumps it. So we never had a really good summer where it had a coordinator that does the rowing club to bring the boats out and utilize it, but for now, it's just storage.
Okay. Is this building gonna be kind of encroaching on that area?
Yeah, we may have to do some adjustments there. Our biggest fear is losing any parking down there, so we're gonna have to maybe move the building over a little bit more, replace the porta potty that's down there, and then still have room for the new harbor shack. But there'll be enough room down there, because it's gonna be about four feet longer and a bit wider. You know, the goal is to get it right in that same spot. There's some signage there that. Of the areas, fishing areas, but we can use those spots. And then the other was the Jinko fence, the fence around the harbor. I tried, made many phone calls out as part of my utility crew. We're trying to get companies that do cyclone fencing, and there's like three in our, in all of Oregon. There's Rick's fencing, Jinko fencing, and one other fence company. And they're all kind of based on Portland, Salem area, Jinko, Salem, Portland, but they did come down and get a quote. And it'll be around the harbor pump station for, for the pump station itself. It's not, it says harbor, but it's really for sewer. And it is a pool item, meaning Lenny will be, you know, paying portions of it because it's part of the station itself, which is part of the shared system. So that's gonna have some slats in it too, the quote called for slats. And then there is some bushes that we may need to try to reconfigure, which is Escalonia down there. So we'll try to keep that, so it's still, so it's not so ugly, I guess, but keep some of the vegetation around it.
Is it currently fenced?
Yeah, it has a cedar fence, now it's been failing and won over.
Okay.
It's just not holding it up. And then we've had problems with folks kicking in some of the fence boards and then plugging into the electric coast. We have to keep the breakers off, and they'll tie everything from tying into the garden hose, overnight camping, plug into power, so we keep the water off and we keep the power off so they can't use the utilities there until we get a new fence. So once a fence is in, then it keeps, it's out. There's options to put barbed wire on there, but we don't have that option on this one. But I think if it's a good six-foot cyclone fence, we probably wouldn't need that. There's cameras down there, so. But it's really needed for security and just aesthetics.
I just think it would be nice.
Yeah. So that was just those items, I think. And then the rest of the report will do, unless there's any questions on the fence or the harbor shack, harbor office, I call it.
Is there enough money in the budget to upgrade to potentially what Brady is asking with the siding agreement?
I think so, we're keeping it in the budget, but I could maybe get some ideas. If it's not that much more to go with some of the hardy plank siding, we can. I know it's weight, weight has a lot to do with it too upon delivery. I also look into the fact, if we could get it down here, we can also, we can always add hardy plank siding ourselves.
When they originally did the estimate for the shed office, they said around ten thousand, so this one just goes a little bit over, but it is well within the capital improvements, improvements budget. So it's not gonna, so you can go a couple thousand over loan, in that's the budget overall.
So is there a motion to accept the business presented with the possibility of going with the other siding?
So.
Is there a second? Do you wanna move to, are you moving to approve both?
I think so.
I do.
Addition of an extra expense for the hardy plank siding?
Take our couple thousand, yeah.
Ten?
Yeah. Yeah.
I appreciate that. Yeah, because the stairway, if there's some stairs and steps, we're just gonna try to integrate all that extra cost that we can just do materially now.
Okay.
Does anyone need a second? I can second that.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Counselor Watson, say, were you?
I didn't know.
Oh. Okay, move by Joyce King, second and by, okay. And it's been moved and seconded to approve the business he was submitted to for the harbor shack and the fencing. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sure.
So if it's a lot, lot more, if it comes back and it's like more than a few thousand, you know, then we wouldn't necessarily be approving that.
Correct, correct.
I would agree back to.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I can, or good, too, there's other stuff, we're gonna do the sheetrocking and the mudding and, and so there's gonna be some cost per material inside, we're gonna run power to it, we're gonna run foam. So there's some of that, but the crew's gonna do all that work, so it'll just be some material costs involved, doing steps, things like that. Making sure there's a good deadbolt on it, because that, we'll try to keep the cost down by doing ourselves and upgrading, rather than having contractors coming.
And it's nice to have it done now, you know, in between.
Yeah, yeah.
So that we can get it all set up for.
So we're ready by, yeah.
For a fifty, a different first.
Yeah, we'll tighten our security system in there, shelving. There's gonna be a lot of design work inside, but we'll be able to do that with just stuff we have here. We don't want to purchase a lot, maybe sheetrock.
Oh, that's good.
Right.
I like that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Usually is suggesting we hired a city engineer like we do for our planning and for our CPA and our.
Yeah, engineer of record.
Right, so Kim, do you wanna kind of go over this a little bit? Does everyone have a chance to read all of them?
Okay, thank you. As, as good as people are, we still need this extra engineering support to map, to help us with the projects in this city, to make sure that we don't go off the rails anywhere. So having an engineer of record is going to be supportive for when, for example, if Brady needs to have street work done, or he needs to do various projects, he can have somebody that can be in his corner essentially to help him out as their project planning. And also be somebody with benefits to the plant department overall, helping out with plan review and construction inspection and all of that stuff. So the idea is looking for somebody that, we always want somebody that has some coastal experience, but that has this generalist experience. I did get a informational interview, if you will, even though this isn't formal and it's not going to bring up from an engineer that were on line of what we're looking for, they work for a city. So these are the types of projects that we need the support for. Even though like, for example, with P and D engineering, you know, with the construction inspections, having our own, with depot bay hills, could use that.
Yeah.
For you to review all that.
Yeah, we could pick a phone up, because right now we have to call, get, we have to get an R and P up and to be approved by council. We have to take bids, and then it goes through this big process, whether we can be able to pick up the phone and it, it would pay for itself almost, not totally, but it would, it would be a lot of cost saving.
Yeah.
And this is covered in the budget, we do have funds available under our informational services designation. So it is, it is.
Right, and this would be.
Well, there's no cost associated with this.
Yeah. Right, no, right. I put down retained basis, counselor pointing that out, it would move more like a time of material, so like an on-call. They would charge us, they would, with a quote, we guess what their hourly rate is and what they would charge us for these things. And if it works like other places do, which I think if we could get the right firm, they would do a work order that would say, this is what you've assigned me to do, this is what, how long it'll take, and how much I think it'll cost. So we can manage by the individual things that we assign them to do. The other thing they would do, kind of like our city attorney does right now, where he has various different quotes, he'll need some support, which there would be some of that, and then he has specific work orders.
Any other questions for Kim?
Yes, so I'm wondering if we want to make sure they have surveying, somebody on staff that can do the surveying work if necessary. Did, we did talk about that, and I spoke to Brady about that, is that one of our?
So, well, normally that, the engineers will overlook surveying details, but I don't know if they do just survey due, due to, but we can find out.
We can see.
I could call Bay City, you know, the firm that Bay City, they're really close to depot bay. I mean, they have their same, same-sized wastewater plant, they have same-sized water plant, the business, everything, they're really close to sister city. And it's a good lipid test to go by.
We can just ask if they, they.
Exactly.
Exactly. Whoever applies, if they additionally have surveyors on staff or on contract.
Or their, their firm, yeah.
There's, there is something on our Q item P, which is basically other duties as assigned. So, and if that particular firm doesn't have surveying experience themselves, if they can tell us during our interview that they have access to that, that can be beneficial.
Yeah, because it's very difficult in our area right now to get.
But when, when we do the interview, which I would, it's set up right now that Brady and I would do the initial screening, and then we would come bring them here, and you guys play, we would meet them.
Another question there?
Yes. So I don't see that, we're just asking them for a request for qualifications. We're not saying, what is your rate, right?
No, I, it's a request for quotes. If I left some qualifications in there, I didn't need to do it.
It's requesting qualification for city engineering services, so it doesn't, unless I'm reading wrong, it doesn't seem. Well, that allows a request for quotes, but it doesn't spell out that we really want them to provide information on their, their rates. How are we gonna decide? I mean, we can say that they're qualified, but they're not.
Well, what's it, what it is, a request for quotes. I did leave off requesting costs under responses, response content, I will add that.
Okay. I can't believe I left that off, but yes, I will add that.
One more thing I don't need to see, Nick, could you?
No.
What we might, maybe it's already there, but what we might need to be stressed by is we want an engineer to sign off with their professional engineering stamp. And that will relieve us of some of the liability, so it has to be, any documents that they review should be signed by, you know, professional engineering, whatever, whatever the appropriate stamp is for whatever they're doing. I, I have it under item I. Review, final submitted construction plans prepared by the professionals, and after acceptance, stamp and sign the drawings as approved for construction by the city engineer. I'm sorry, say it one more time, please. Review, final submitted construction plans, prepared by other professionals, and after acceptance, stamp and sign the drawings as approved for construction by the city engineer.
And that city engineer would be them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could we ask for like a work sample of something similar to the type of work we would be encouraging?
Are you thinking about what kind of thing would you want to say as a sample, or are you thinking about maybe?
What they have prepared for other communities that would be similar to what we're asking for? Like potentially reviewing a sub, new subdivision, if they have experience, if they've seen their work.
I think we can. Maybe for.
I have it, so discussing each task, outline the scope of work above, we can say.
Just a work sample.
Provide.
Works.
Workers.
So when Jack was talking, he just dropped off a thing, but when he was talking before, I'm sorry, Mary, can I?
No, seriously.
He was talking about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar quote for, I think it was a hundred and sixty-six. I don't remember exactly the number. For P and D engineers to review, you know, to oversee the construction, you know, for the bids there, and help, help decide, you know, who prepare the R and P and then decide who qualifies, and then to oversee their work. And I'm wondering if somehow we can find out, when we said to P and D, please tell us how much it's gonna toss to do X, Y, and Z, we asked them to prepare a bid that shows what the, if they were to do similar work, what they'd charge, and to see, you know, if these are reasonable, whoever's bidding should, you know, maybe we can then compare apples to oranges, is a good idea, if we're getting a good deal or not. Is that, is that too excessive, or is that okay? I have. Yes, yes.
Yeah, I make a comment on this. What the P and D engineering is doing is they, they have written the technical specifications in the design for the docks and pilings. And what they will be doing under this engineering, post-bid, post-construction engineering is to oversee and write and approve those technical requirements that have specific parameters in both the manufacturing, installation process. So it's, it's pretty much all involved with marine construction.
Right.
It's not, it's not to say that they couldn't have another firm that might do, like if they were doing a, we had to redo the land side of the harbor, they may have a, a different engineering firm or subcontractor, they may have on staff someone to do the non-overwater work. So, you know, basically, and it, and any of the, any of the sign-offs have to be by an engineer who is licensed in Oregon. Not everybody working on this dock and piling project is licensed in Oregon, but the primary people involved are licensed in, in the state of Oregon. So they can sign off, and that means that everything is in compliance with requirements of the state of Oregon. That may be more information than you're looking for, but that's what.
That's very helpful, yes, I'm, I'm sure that the, a city engineer would not have the marine capacity.
We, we don't, we don't know that.
Yeah.
Um, so the, the, the answer to your question is, if I gave them like the parameters from a quote that we have from P and D, could they quote it out? Yes. But that's just price, you know, you would wanna look at how, who, who would be doing it.
Sure.
Tell us. But, but could they give us a quote? Probably. They could give us a quote, because they're gonna have access to the same information. If we did not have P and D on board, because a lot of times what you have, one construction, one engineer, one company design, and then somebody else's builds, and they don't always have the same person oversee it, depends on the project. So it makes sense to have P and D keep, continue on, because they're the most familiar with it. They've gone through a lot, but we could get one.
And well, and also, not only a quote, but say, you know, how would you structure your team to be able to complete this project?
One thing we would have hoped that any bidding firm would do would say, we can do this, or we don't have the expertise. One thing we would have hoped that any bidding firm would do would say, we can do this or we don't have the expertise.
Okay. Okay, um, so should we go forward with, with this?
Yes. Yes.
And is the motion we're trying to approve?
Did you?
Oh, did we?
Did we make a motion?
Oh, move to a group.
Well, with some.
With the changes, with the modifications.
With the modifications that's needed.
Those are not.
It's, okay, with that, a motion, is there a second?
All second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the professional city engineering services.
From assistance, we want our.
Our thing, yes, so under the valuation criteria, there is no price.
All off, my apologies, I can't really know that's price off.
Okay.
With modifications as nominees.
And that should actually carry a pretty big weight, right?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Exactly, okay.
All right, back to motion, any further discussion on the motion?
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll get started on this and get that going. Okay, so resolution number five three four dash two three, has everybody had a chance to review this? And this is going to make it more of a formal public meeting compliance that we all need to follow. And I think this is an excellent idea and. So is there any discussion on the resolution? The resolution of the city of People Bay adopting a policy regarding city council compliance with public meeting laws. While attending public functions, social activities, trainings, seminars, workshops, or seminars.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I do have a comment. And I hope you'll bear with me and maybe follow along on this document. And I want to say, first of all, I agree with you, I think there is an excellence to this idea. But I, I disagree completely with the approach here and I'll explain why. Beginning with the first page and with me, I don't like to go against the administration or anybody on things like this. But this, this concerns me and it should concern every one of us as a, as an elected official. On the discussion, it says, there are times when there are events such as the salmon bank, the upcoming fifty celebration holiday, et cetera, et cetera. When it is necessary and important to set guidelines to meet regulations around Oregon public meetings laws for transparency in government. Well, right off the bat, I would say that we, we don't set policy or we should not set policy on, on following laws. Those are already set. It is Oregon, it's in Oregon revised statutes, what the law is. So we either follow the law or we don't. Signing documents which are extra legal, documents that may be used against you at some point. A document you don't have to sign, a document that does not protect you and does not protect the city, it is really extra legal. It's not a, a document that we should even be considering signing, it doesn't mean anything in the end, except that maybe to broadcast that we are indeed behind the Oregon open meetings law. The problem there, there's another problem with that, though, it's not just enough to say that we're behind the Oregon open meetings law. We say here that we are just going to. Sign to follow this one area of the Open Meetings Act, which involves these large gatherings where counselors can, can, will. Attend and, and then be subject to the open meetings law where they cannot discuss city business. Uh, which is fine, you know, I have brought along minutes from, this is the Newport City Council, this is, these are recent minutes, eleven seven twenty-two and eleven sixteen twenty-two. I'll pass these along, you can, you can look at these, but the point of this is that recently, in late October, the entire city council. Newport City Council, the city manager, the city recorder, the assistant city manager, all went to the League of Oregon Cities. Which is, you know, a great thing, because, you know, this is where we learn about the cities of the future and what, what things, what works and what doesn't. And they had a simple advisory, verbal advisory from their attorney that, and their city manager. Neville said that shared appearances are important, appearances meaning us being someplace. Joint education should be okay, but decisions or discussions cannot take place with a quorum present. A council member will have to leave if subjects start to drift that way, et cetera, et cetera. So these guys managed to go down there, they didn't have to sign something, a document. They didn't have to promise that they were going to hew the law. I mean, we all raised our hand, we're sworn to do that, so that's kind of extra legal in that sense. On page two, it, it, it say, again, if I, if I repeat myself, I apologize. It says, unless properly noticed, the mayor or councilors will not discuss any city business when three or more members are together at any public function, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, this is resolution fifty-three, five thirty-four dash twenty-three. Well, I have this omission, there's this omission issue here that we are not, we're just saying this one clause of the Oregon Open Meetings Act that we're going to follow. And I think that we either follow the entire entirety of the thing or we don't, just, we don't single out policies. I mean, I think this is good for somebody who doesn't understand the law very well. Or who has ignored it maybe, or just is not ignored it, that they've just never been subject to it. I think it's good that we all review the Oregon Open Meetings Act and be aware of it. But to, to just single out one area of it, just to me, doesn't seem to be very smart. Uh, on this page here, exhibit A. Uh, what are we doing here? I, I would just encourage nobody to sign this, you don't have to sign this, it doesn't protect you, it doesn't protect the city. In fact, I think it jeopardizes the city counselors here. What if you, for example, inadvertently violate the Oregon Open Meetings Act? That can happen, just inadvertently, you don't misunderstand it, you're suddenly find yourself with three people talking about it, oh, you know, like you did it. Well, this can be used against you, you know, you may be on a city council someday where you're surrounded by not all allies, you know, for heaven's sakes. And then what's the next step, ensure or something else, you know? We've got all these rules regarding stuff that put counselors in jeopardy. Finally, and this is the key thing here, is that, is we discuss policy, the, the, next to the la, the last page, public meetings and record guidelines for Deepwater Bay City Council. There's this one clause in here where it says in boldface, as if to remind everybody, especially those in the audience. That Oregon Public Meetings Law is a public attendance law, not a public participation law. And then it says down here, the individual council determines the amount of public participation. Well, I have a problem with these lines right here, because first of all, this is not a law. Oregon Public Meetings Law is a public attendance law, not a public participation law. You will not find that in the ORS. This is lifted straight out of the Oregon, the Attorney General's Oregon Open Meetings handbook, so it's an opinion. The reason that. It says it's not a public participation law implying that the public really has no right to speak at meetings unless we say so. There's, in state law, there's just nothing that says the public has a right to speak, okay? And as you know, as lawmakers, if the state doesn't enumerate a law, then we can go ahead and do it. And we have done that, it's in our charter, we allow people to speak, not for two, but for five. So this conflates state law, Attorney General opinion, and our charter in a spelling book in the end. I guess I could go on, but I don't really think I need to. I, I would, I would ask, implore the city council to put this on ice and reconsider it. If we need to be, we probably need to be lectured and, and guided on the Oregon Open Meetings Act. But we shouldn't be just signing little bits and pieces of it saying that we're going to do it. We are sworn already to do this council and I would encourage you to just not adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kim, do you want to address some of these issues that being raised?
Um, I'll start by saying that this isn't anything that it's law, I mean, it's not a resolution. Well, it is a resolution, but it's not ordinance, so it's not a law, it's just a policy. And it's not holding you to anything, except to say that we do understand that we, if we all get together, we can't talk business, period. It allows you to attend as a council, seven members, the events that go on with the city without having to worry about any perceived violations. Because it's saying, I signed that I said, I understand this, that's what it does. If you don't want to do this and it's absolutely up to you, what it just means is that for the celebration, for example, we have to notice if you attend. And that's the way it's supposed to be, we just went through the League of Oregon Cities and some of the cities actually do that. When their members go to workshops, when they go to trainings, they notice those meetings. And that is not something council has as well. This just means you don't have to, because you're putting it out there that our council policy is we will not have business discussions at these events. That's all it, that's all it does. It not saying if you do anything, if you violate it.
It just limits in the.
It's just, it's an acknowledgement, there you go. It's basically just an acknowledgement and maybe, and again, it's absolutely up to you. We just have to keep in mind that if you don't want to do this, which is.
Then we do have to make the notices.
I would have to make a notice anytime everybody wanted to get together and to go over there and, and I can do that. I mean, when we went to League of Oregon Cities, some of the cities, we found out, some of the cities do it, some don't.
Mayor Short? I would be glad to make this council on that, if we want to pass a resolution or have a vote that says we're going to follow the Oregon Open Meetings Act, I'm all for that. I just don't see why we should be signing it.
Kim, did you have a comment? Yeah, um, I think, and I don't care about, I think it's good to sign, because you, you know, people, when they sign things, kind of pay attention to what they're signing. And it's like we're aware of it. I think this is probably an important thing to do. I guess I don't have to remind you of all the controversy that was stirred up about the emergency preparedness committee. When three counselors were meeting and the claim was made that, oh, there was a quorum and they're doing everything illegally and, you know, naughty, naughty, naughty. And this clearly states that if there's four more, which is in our charter, a quorum of the city council is the majority, which is four, not three. And so I think this is a resolution that puts that in writing, so we don't have this misinformation and. Controversies stirred up, up over an odd issue.
Right.
And a false one. So I'm actually really in favor of putting this resolution together and adopting it. And I, I actually think signing it just makes people pay attention.
Right, this makes the public that we will not be.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, so when people do see us on the fifty-year get-together, they understand that, we understand that we're not talking business, that we're there for pleasure essentially.
Right, right.
Yeah.
To be with them.
I think, yeah, I think it's a good thing to have crystal clear that we understand them will adhere to it.
Mayor, any other question about quorum? Um, we're seven member council. Uh, and if we were all in here, that would be five people, correct? Would that be quorum, would it be four?
Four.
It's four.
What if there's five people meeting or? Can, if, if, can four people meet?
Yes, that's a quorum.
Four people can meet.
Yeah, it's a quorum. But we would have to notice it because it's a quorum. Three.
Four people can meet.
And then it's an official meeting.
Yes.
So three people, so four, four is the quorum, what if, okay, but three people. So you can have four people, you can have four people meeting and holding a city council meeting. And three city counselors meeting at a, at a. At a subcommittee, wouldn't that be a quorum of the four?
No.
No.
No, it's the individual group that, so overall, the council, if four council members get together, no matter what they're doing, that's a quorum. And that would have to be noticed. If three council members get together, it ain't the greatest thing, but it's not a quorum. It's just more of a perception issue than a violation of any public meeting laws.
Well, just to be sure about this, I believe the state attorney general, in his opinion, said two people getting together and talking about business is a meeting.
And he, no, it's not a meeting, but is there a perception that you could be discussing city, city stuff? Yes, so they tell you to try to avoid that, but in the case of, for example, the emergency preparedness committee, we have two counselors on it right now. Okay, so yes, they're getting together, but they're discussing, they said, genderized, they're discussing emergency preparedness, they're not discussing.
My question was about three, like.
Right, but even so, even let's say, uh, Mayor Short decided to join the committee, that's three. They're still getting together, they're still discussing the emergency preparedness, but it's not quorum of the city council. But can it be viewed by the public as then possibly discussing city, it says, sure. But that's why you're genderized, that's why you have meeting notes, that's why you have the video.
And I, I would just like to respond to the Council of Rights comments about the quorum of the emergency. It wasn't just so much the quorum, it was the lack of notice. So that was also part of it.
You don't have to notice a meeting, there's no quorum. Right, that's not true. If it is a public, a governing, if it is a public body, no matter whether it's an ad hoc, a committee, commission, or the council. A public body meeting must be noticed if they're going to have a quorum.
Okay, but this doesn't.
This wasn't for any meet, it, it, it wouldn't matter that it was an ad hoc, if you guys were all getting together, um, it's a public body. You want to have a notice.
If there's, if there's a quorum, if there was a quorum.
Well, like say for example, um, the emergency preparedness, we say it's three, right? So, okay, so only two can get together. So we notice the meeting, right, but you just don't have your meeting. You say, okay, well, there's only two of us, we don't have a quorum, not going to have a meeting, but you still have to notice it. So whatever the governing, whatever the public body does, you have to notice, you have to absolutely notice. You just cannot have a meeting if you don't have a quorum, you can't make decisions.
Right.
So that's the point, it, it's, it's going round and round about this. I can, I can clarify that for sure, but I, I feel like, because you don't know unless you were actually in the meeting, whether you have a quorum.
Okay, so I would like to go forward with this resolution five thirty-four dash twenty-three. Is there a motion to accept it as presented?
So.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to go forward with this resolution number five thirty-four dash twenty-three as presented. Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have, when no one's. Five eyes?
Can't count, six eyes, no, two, three.
Six eyes, okay, so a motion passed this.
Oh, Brady, I just.
No.
Five, five, right, oh, great, thank you guys, all right.
I'm not a good man.
I know, I know.
Okay, let's move on to the city staff reports.
Okay, so Brady and I worked together to prepare this citywide projects memo. And unless the council would like to have, we do have a little bit of an update.
Yeah.
Um, with, I think we have maybe, okay, with parks.
Some of the signings, yeah.
Your signs. This was one of the Parks Commission's recommendations and requests was that, that the city spend some of their parks money to get Stuart these towns. to get Stewart these signs on one-on-one, and Brady.
Directing, directing the park from the highway.
Directing the sign, right, right, so, um, so Brady.
So there was a sign out, out on the highway that was on the west side that directed folks to the city park along with a boat ramp that was available and, and, uh, and it had a picture of a boat on the ramp, and it's one of the C common. But we did, or, so, I'm, I'm working with ODOT and the sign, they, uh, they're way behind, they're understaffed, didn't return phone calls, they said they would get back to me, and so I just went ahead and moved forward with, I said, if we replace what was there before, he's like, yeah, fine, just let us know, and we'll work with you on the location. I said, no, we'll just put it back exactly where it was, it's the snapped off post is still across the highway. So we got, we went ahead and purchased the city park where it's got an arrow pointing down, and it's pretty on both sides, so this is one way. And, um, along with the boat ramp, but we also saw on our, sorry, the boat ramp, that there's a hiking, one, two, so, it's, it's a hiking trail. So the city park with a narrow, with the boat ramp, um, notification, and then, uh, uh, hiker.
Hiker. It's just the images, so it's not the words, but we all know what.
Yeah.
You see that when you have the.
I, I don't think we all, most, most people know what those look like.
Yeah, I went down to Newport, saw theirs, and it's the same thing, they just have a picture of a boat ramp and it says boat ramp here, so. Anyway, we're, we're getting one of their wants done, and that was, uh, probably several times last year, and I've worked, tried to work with ODOT, but they're really hard to get stuff right now, especially in our zone.
He, and he does have one more sign coming, because it's actually a thing, um, where it's, uh, oh, we do have that sign, where it tells people don't block the boat launch.
Yeah, we've had, folks have been blocking the boat launch in the morning, they'll park there, watch, I, I don't know, they like to watch the harbor, they'll park right in the middle when the boat's coming. One fellow was complaining because he knocked on a window and a guy was down asleep, and he didn't watch the boat, it was parked right on the ramp, so. Yeah, who said you might wanna put a sign in, which we did have one, but a lot of, uh, different signage that they're moving and stuff. So anyway, I, I purchased the signs and, uh, so Roy's gonna try to get it installed, so it says don't block the boat.
Thank you, I have a, yes. Yeah, regarding the grant writing project.
Uh-huh.
I'm a little bit, um, concerned at the lack of, what's my name, it's a lack of, um, writing on our behalf. Um, there's a lot of, um, ideas, the, the memo that I gave you that was approved by the other members of the city council, and there might be more that we think of as we go, but, um, I don't see them doing any writing for us.
Given the holiday season, there just hasn't been a lot out there right now, but I've been receiving several notifications of bids that are opening and checking out. So I'm meeting with the group on the sixth, so, um, I need to provide the council a quick update after my meeting with them. Um, I did share what you had shared with me, and we, and I shared some other things. So I'm hoping now that the holidays are over with, and people are no longer on vacation, because they were, um, that we'll be able to start kicking some things off, so.
But they've been on board since October, I think, right?
Mm-hmm, but we're, we're not paying them, just so you know, we haven't actually paid them for anything yet. But I just think the timing might have been a lot, because there weren't a lot of grants out there at this point. At least none that we, I've received notifications of one that I got excited, some that I got excited about until I looked at what they were. And there's, we just do not have some projects to meet some of this stuff. Now, after talking with you and sharing that information, I'm hopeful that they will have done some due diligence in this time and have some ideas that they can give reply for. But I notice a lot of things don't even open until May. Although there would have been a few smallish grants that have opened though. So I, I'm watching too, and I'm really eager for there to actually be a grant that can open, besides the emergency preparedness.
Yes, Lindsay.
Um, I really like the format and how this report is done, I appreciate it, I think it's easy to follow. Um, I have two questions of things that don't appear.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so one is, I saw somewhere else in council packet that, um, the Hills of Depot Bay has requested a ninety day extension of their, whatever part of the process they're in right now. So my question goes back to, are we still actively talking with them about a good location for an emergency cache up there? Um, and it doesn't have to be right at the beginning of the development, it can be further back in there. Um, but because they are currently in that planning phase, it seems, I, I would, I would like to have active discussions about where emergency caps could be located, and that's the thing.
That's what's on the chat.
Yes. Uh, I talked to Dave, who was gonna bring it up, but they're gonna have a meeting, I think, on the next plan meeting about the pump station. So maybe, maybe.
And I think that's what you're saying you were talking about, right?
Maybe we can bring it up at that point, I'm gonna go to that meeting, I know a lot of the neighbors are going to that meeting too, for, uh, reasons of like, uh, sound, things like that, like, uh, they're worried about the, the impact of the pump noise, things like that. So maybe that's a good, not tied in with that, but maybe it's a good time to bring up other issues, because they're gonna have, I don't know if they're getting straight to some, because they're in a wet area, wetland area, so they're not building on that, but they're, they're in, in kind of a tight window of response, so I don't know.
Yeah, so, but I don't think we need to be tied to the pump station necessarily.
No, we don't, it's just a.
And if, if they can provide any area of land, we can look at grants to get the, you know, the units placed and all that kind of stuff. So if it's gonna be tied up with that pump station and like issues around that, I would rather just have a place that we can locate and know, and then we can start asking for, you know, like a grant.
Yeah. Yeah, just, right, I believe they have a public parking area, because they're similar to Stonebridge, and they have an area for like RVs for their residents, things like that, that might be a good spot.
Yeah, so maybe there.
So, yeah, it's worth talking to them.
Can you, can you, can you do that, or are we not doing?
Um, yeah, I mean, we could talk, uh, like Kit and I could, we need like Chris and, and the, the, the developers. Um, it's probably a good time to, we can start talking about it.
Okay, so Kit and Brady will be meeting with the developers, so they will be talking about that, so I will make sure I add that to the next project updates.
Awesome. To keep on the list.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're right, cause that opens up a bigger area to ask for your ideas, yeah.
So you can have that, okay.
Yes, and even not in there, that they can, that they can hand over to us, cause then, once we have a location, then we can start running grants.
Yeah, and what we do is their, their residents, or their, uh, HOA, and, and the city, so, yeah.
Yes.
I can add like a, like a category for emergency preparedness, because we also have Mike, who came to the meeting and shared all the wish list, which is around emergency preparedness.
Yeah.
We're gonna be looking and updating that, we can just put a category.
Great, okay, and then the second thing I was gonna ask about is also emergency preparedness, and it's that culvert.
Yes.
Have we purchased that culvert, can we, can we do that?
Well, we can, we're, I was more concerned about the engineering, so if we could, I, I, I just don't know if we get that, is it, if it's gonna be feasible. There was so many different details beyond that, um, so if we can just throw them in, you know, the creek, maybe we did, we can. Maybe there's some other processes you have to do, maybe with some kind of rock or something.
So I think Brady is looking for some kind of emergency, engineering assistance with this.
Approach to it.
Okay, so we need to, instead of focusing on the culvert, we need to focus on getting an engineering report?
Yeah.
Right, which if we get our city engineer on board, they do these things.
Then there could be kind of a written plan of how to go about the whole process of the culvert install.
Okay.
Cause it sounds like, um, Brady has some concerns because about, about the location of project, the material, and that's what the city engineer.
And this will be replaced if the, um, bridge goes out?
Yes, I think that's the plan.
Yeah, it would be a way to get emergency traffic from one side of the bay to the other.
Yeah, well, the, the bay is gonna look a hell of a lot different after a, um, tsunami, an earthquake, an earthquake and tsunami, so you can engineer all you want now to put a culvert in, in an existing configuration of the river and creek bottom, and it's gonna be, it's probably subsided, it will subside most likely, because, anyway, uh, but an engineer can get that.
Yeah, I, I'm not against getting an engineering report, they can give us a specs of all of what we should purchase, and it's, I think that's, that's great. So we should be focusing on that though, not the culvert purchase.
Correct, I mean, that's, I think that's the start, and that sounds like a good first project for, strong, city engineer.
Okay. Maybe could, should we add that to our, or, or cue somewhere that that's a project that we're interested in, I don't know.
Or remember some stuff.
I, I'm sorry, I think that might be a waste of time. You cannot engineer for an unknown, but you can stockpile culverts and a lot of gravel somewhere for emergency use. And, um, then use the materials you have on hand to meet emergency conditions.
It, right, correct, if it's a matter of stockpiling stuff, that's different, but it sounds like the idea is to get these culverts specifically for something, and maybe, so that's where you need the engineering, if you're just gonna stockpile supplies, that's one thing, but.
So we're talking about stockpiling something so that post-cascadia, we have the ability to go both sides of the creek, right? And for, yes, that, I mean, that's the idea.
Right.
And so in, and in prior conversations we've had through the committee and with Brady, it was my understanding that we had the fill material, the gravel that we needed, and we have equipment that could basically do it, but all we really needed was a culvert that we could put in there.
Yeah, kind of, yeah, we, yeah.
So we are essentially talking about stockpiling culverts.
Yes, eight, but eight, my understanding, it might be two, it might, might be two now.
Eight culverts.
But the idea was, yes, to purchase that and to have it in the event of cascade or some other emergency event where our bridges are gone, that we have something that we can use to get across the creek. Um, I mean, that's the conversations we've been having for months and months now.
Cause I'll have to get to whistle stuff, that's for sure.
And we specifically, in this year's budget, priced for the culvert, like, I, I believe the culvert is a line item in this year's budget, if you're right. So, um, I'm not against an engineering report, I would personally work to, you know, look at how we can get money for that, but I also would like a culvert in our stockpile in this year's budget, it's.
I'm sure. Okay.
No, like, it's like a big this, it's like that, it's like a big round metal or plastic, I don't know, thing that the water can pass through, um.
And you put material over to drive over or walk over.
Do we have a, a contact quote on this?
Uh, no, I could get a quote from it, but we, we have the equip, but if, if it's large, if it, it may be too large for what we have, our backhoe.
Yeah.
We really have a certain size of a backhoe, we don't have a trackhoe, we don't have giant equipment, and it's.
Is this the issue of the only place we would put it, or are we talking about just having it?
No, across the creek.
So it should be one place, so do we know what size?
Yeah.
Brady has given us the thought.
That's the concern, I think, is that.
Yeah, it was brought up.
We, if, if we get too big, we don't have the equipment to move.
Yeah, so we should get as big as we can that our equipment that we have existing can do.
So if you selected a size and the equipment, you know the equipment won't work, then we need to, we need to downsize.
Yeah.
That's, I think, the issue, right?
I guess, I don't have my notes on hand, but I remember something.
And so if we have like sixteen inch culverts that are, say, twenty feet long, will that, that, so our backhoe can move those, but will that work if we put them in the creek, would they just be too small and not be feasible? But that's where we need some professional advice.
But maybe, but it's something that we have on hand in the event of an emergency.
I think Brady's concerned about why you write.
It's been for emergency, like another area is blacktop helicopters bring in bridges and then just send right over areas so traffic can get through.
Yes, but we're talking about about six weeks where we need to be able to take care of ourselves before we could, uh, expect outside assistance coming by. I am not against doing an engineering report, I would like to have a culvert here, or two culverts. We've been discussing this, I'm telling you, we've been discussing this for eight months, it has been on every single meeting we've had, we've had multiple discussions with Brady, Brady has given us information about the size of it. So I, I'm, I just, I hear my voice right now, I mean, I just kinda said, but I, I'm not really, I would like to buy the culvert and I wanna do the engineering report.
Okay.
Okay. Let, let me ask a question about this then. Do you need a culvert for, uh, North Depot Creek also? I mean, if that road goes out, it, you were, we're putting a culvert in on South Depot Bay Creek that, uh.
You can get around that by, you know, like, by, um, angles and all that stuff, so, you know, it's not quite as beautiful.
Right, okay, all right, all right. All right, that answers the question.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably not a bad idea, but let's, let's get one.
It'd be convenient for me.
So, so Kim, when we talked about culverts recently, you had mentioned that you might can get a better price through a grant? Well, I said we could possibly get them through a grant, supposing there's a grant open. And I can certainly, when I meet with them on the sixth, say, city wants a culvert. Uh, correct me if I remember wrong, so if the council buys a culvert that Brady says the equipment will move, but they redo the engineering study and it's the wrong size, or it won't work, are you guys okay with that?
We have a culvert.
I call it a Nancy Betty Field culvert.
Well, I mean, when, when cascade happens, I don't think we're gonna be upset that you have an extra culvert later.
Okay, all right, there we go. We will, um, add it to the emergency preparedness project updates, and we will add it to our project list. Oh, well, it's already added, but we will, um, hit smash.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Can I ask a question about this budget, or this, uh, budget list?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and forgive me, cause you're gonna have to bring me up to date on this, but it has to do with the justice for the parking lot. And this is where you were intending to put the, uh, recharge station, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
My question all along on this has been about this parking lot. Uh, I'm not opposed to a parking lot, I just don't think that we should be paying for it. And I don't, and I think we have to relook at some of these things, that, like, a parking lot is certainly a public facility. This one happens to fall out of the urban growth area. So the funding for it is gonna have to come from someplace else, like our general fund, right?
And we have a grant applied for it.
Oh, we have a grant applied, right.
Right, for the electric vehicle charging station.
Right, for the charging stations, not for the parking lot, that's, and I'm, that's what I'm concerned, I'm not concerned about the charging stations. I'm concerned about the parking lot. Uh, and it's this, uh, the parking lot mainly benefits the business community, as I understand it. It's, it's a northern parking, it's pretty constricted, and I understand that we need to have more parking. But, uh, I don't know that we've really explored the funding, the way to fund this property, or the best way to fund it. One way, I think, would be through a local improvement district or a business improvement district, preferably. That's where these, uh, where the, the, the property owners in the business area who recognizing that, you know, they need to improve their area to get a parking lot, pay for that. Uh, it shouldn't be on the backs of the residents of this town who, uh, who are seeing that all their pothole money and their street money, and, uh, uh, all of this money that should be going into, uh, uh, the infrastructure of our town, like staff salaries and things like this. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be on the backs of that. I would like to have a serious discussion about reevaluating the way that we're gonna, we're gonna pay for this. From what I hear, or from what I recall, is it's quite an expensive operation.
It is not, it's about, no, it's gonna be about fifty thousand dollars that we've been budgeting for two years.
What about, what about the restaurants?
We're not putting a restaurant, we're just putting in the parking lot. This is gravel parking lot, correct, Brady?
No, it's paved.
Oh, it's paved, so the idea, Brady's kind of talked about that before, the idea is to get, kind of in stages, is to get it cleared out and to.
Yeah, yeah, cause it's been on the, yeah, it's been on the burner since twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
My understanding is it's been around for a while.
Yeah.
And it was, it started out to get overflow parking for the folks that utilized the North Point Parks and the trails up there along Lee Street, um, and the complaints that people have for parking in front of their house, so.
So what I regret that we need to make sure that we're, we're charging the right either the new idea of this local improvement for business, but we have the transit room tax, if it's meant to serve, um, tourists for parking, we can take it from there, so I think we've started to better allocate those seventy percent that goes to the tourism to, to projects that really help the infrastructure that supports that, so.
Right.
Um, I think we did that for this time, but if we didn't, we should be looking at that.
We did.
Okay.
Yeah. Are there any other updates or comments on the staff reports? I think, I think I'm very awful.
Probably, yeah.
Saves a lot of time and.
Yeah, it's great.
We can just.
Spark a lot of discussions, for sure.
Okay. Are there any questions on council, probably? Um, are there any closing public comments this evening? Anybody have any great words of wisdom tonight? Okay, uh, council comments. Why don't I go ahead and start with them?
Why don't I go ahead and start with that, I got two or three here, um it's always been my goal to have um and part of our goals for the year is to have open conversations with our constituents, our neighbors and that type of thing. So I am going to make myself available on Fridays at ten thirty in the morning here at City Hall, and I think we've got a cured coffee maker, and I'll plug in a coffee for somebody, and we're gonna sit and um have open discussions with our residents.
You're starting this Friday, right?
I'm starting this Friday.
Well, then Brady, you the. So. City Hall is close to public.
Right, it's it'll be open that for one hour.
I'm getting from ten thirty to eleven, but they're not gonna abolish that.
Right. No, 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 it'll be right through the council chambers, and that way um
Okay.
we can start opening and being very transparent with our residents and give them an opportunity, because they're not obviously zooming in, and um I know I've had a lot of people, I'm out walking, say love to sit down and chat with you about this, and so I just think it would be wonderful to have an opportunity to folks to just drop in and and chat and and make time for them.
How how will you live up to that and wanna do this?
Uh well, we're going to put it on our website, I promoted it on the radio this morning.
We're getting at the post office and um so we have the two Facebook pages, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get your thumbs following each other.
So um thank you, Kimberly, you're the one who did that, are you gonna keep notes of what you're?
Yes, yes, absolutely, I will refer back to you if I'm event with and um their concerns and ideas. Um the other thing is, I would really like to thank our staff, our utility crew went out during that storm over Christmas and was amazing, they chopped down trees and rerouted things, and they were amazing, and they also kept our sewage treatment plant going, um.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, it took a hit, we didn't make the news.
No, most importantly is we didn't make the news because we didn't have a spill.
We didn't have any.
And we didn't violate any of the requirements and regulations that he was.
Thank God. Yeah, and it was slow, we had some.
Yeah, he and his team did a very job.
We haven't.
He was he was there too.
I know.
I know.
Very good.
Yes.
Thank you, please express and.
Sure. You're right here.
But thank you. Didn't I offer to buy pizza for you?
You did.
We do, we still have a sizable leak we're trying to find, it's got pizza.
We're trying to find a leak that we're, I mean, where it gets twice the leak gets a pizza.
Now, this is a leak out of the water?
Out of the water, yeah, we're showing quite a bit of water, uh more, it's it's sixty four gallons a minute more than normal, yeah, with our average, so it's a sizable leak, but
Oh, that was.
Yeah.
We'll find it, it's hard to find them when they're uh they're so water.
Just raining.
When it's operating through the ground, it's already.
A lot of folks see the groundwater bubbling through the ground, and you think, oh, there it is, you know, so we're getting a lot of calls, but it's.
Not good, and my last comment is um Senator Merkley, I had an invitation to meet with him on September, uh not September, Saturday, I can't remember the number, Saturday, um.
The fourteenth.
Friday? Yes, Friday, the fourteenth of um.
January.
February.
Oh, February, sure, never mind.
Yeah, um and there's no time or location, but I would just like to, I was to invite anybody that was interested in the meeting with them. I think that would be very beneficial if we put that on the calendars, so was it January, maybe it was January.
I wrote down we met today, it's Saturday fourteenth.
Yeah, January fourteenth.
It's Saturday?
Yeah, yeah, so on the Saturday, and as soon as I get the information, I'll get it for you. Uh but I think that would be very advantageous.
Friday day, that's.
So that's my goal.
And if we have four who want to meet him, we have four, we have to notice that y'all will be there.
Not for us.
And no, because it's different than that, because you guys will actually discuss business at the city, at the Senator Merkley, right? You're not just gonna go socialize with me, you're gonna wanna talk business, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Surprise.
Okay. Okay, who wants to go to work session?
Who wants to start this evening, council comments? Do you want to start this evening?
Sure, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Uh and thank you for bearing with me, because I learned a few lessons at the city council. And I must say, it's a it's a real pleasure to work with each and every one of you, I've come to know you all a little bit. Uh but I respect you all. I don't always disagree or agree that, you know, or disagree, so. Uh one thing I would like to do at the next meeting, if it's possible, if everybody agreed in this, is to have a little what I'd like to see at our meetings is a section where we discuss finances, or we can discuss finances. For example, tonight, and it was on a consent consent agenda, so uh uh you know, I could have suggested we pull it off, but it it there would have been nothing to discuss anyway, because it was just accounts payable, it was a payable toward the checks that had been written or a check register, I believe. Uh and I think that it would be very helpful to us all as councillors to have uh at every meeting some uh outgoing, as well as the outgoing, to have the income, uh to have, you know, to look at it's at our expenditures relative to our budget, this is not unusual in city government to say that
Right.
you know, at month twelve, we're one hundred percent or a hundred and ten percent.
And that was an oversight for today?
Well, I did send it out later, I did send out the revenue.
I apologize for not sending, thank you.
Um I can provide it right here to you right now, councillor, if you'd like to see it.
Oh, thank you. Right, I'd love to.
And it does tell you um where we're at, and so it's just some history, it might matter if you don't want.
Please.
Is that the council said that once a month, the first meeting of the month, they wanted to see a revenue expenditure report. I would like to just send, but this takes us up until October, so. Um happy to discuss any item on there, you can do it during a meeting, you can call me, you can come in and sit down and go over anything you want.
I would just think about that, I would check your emails several times a day, the day of meetings, because we get a lot of last minute things.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Pass our blossom.
Well, you'll get your a computer then as soon as Kelly's sworn in.
Yes, we should, I didn't think to talk to you guys about that, but when we're back, maybe I can have it just two minutes.
Well, as part of this uh uh you know, meetings report, uh I'm sure like what we had Brady provided on this projects list, and I kind of think we need a major financial projects list to bring us up to date on the issues, like the status of our audits. I I saw in a packet not long ago that we had received a notice from the state regarding the withholding of revenues, I don't know what the status on that is, but I think we should know so we can see the progress that we're making on solving these budget issues. And I want to say thank you to you, Kimberly, for getting these updates on the minutes, thank you, mayor, for doing that, for for watching over that, uh one of the reasons that I was thinking about this stuff is because in this minutes package, it it uh the mayor says right here in the minutes of our May tenth budget committee meeting, this is an astonishing bit of information. The city's general fund resources have only seen a growth of approximately one point two percent per year since two thousand and seven. That's exactly right, that matches the figures that I pretty much was able to come up with in reviewing all of these budgets. Our growth on general fund resources is just absolutely not there. So every time we spend money, you know, we've got inflation getting us, the value of the dollar is down, plus we're spending money, and my concern came from the fact that as I looked at last month, well, we spent a hundred and some odd thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, I think, on the police contract, we have raises, we had a had a supplemental budget, we and I don't know what the status of this stuff is, but I know that we had a big charge from ODOT. So as I I'm worried about uh our, I don't know what our cash looks like, if that's up where it needs to be. And in the long run, I think I, not even in the long run, right away, at some point, we've gotta get ourselves, we have to get a projected and look at a projection of our revenues and incomes over the next couple of years. So that we can assure ourselves that we're not gonna run out of money here with a, again, right here, here it is, one point two percent a year. Uh so we have to watch every, it's 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 easy to say we have to watch every dime, but we honestly do. That's why I asked our our newest commissioner to come back with ideas that don't cost money, because we are in a very tight position here. Uh so I would like to see us do, you know, pay a little bit more attention to, you know that may not be fair, because I know you have paid attention to this. But I, my goal as a councillor is to not pass on unbalanced books to the next city council, that's two years away.
And we have a budget that is balanced every year.
Oh, we have to, because we don't have a pretty impressive.
Right, right, so they are balanced. We have, what we cannot do is we cannot re- produce a report
Okay.
that shows that we are.
That's how it starts the officers.
So.
We're working on that, I'm hoping, I'm hoping I'm making a temp there, but we've limited, again, to the holidays and stuff, and but you know, the holidays everywhere, so that's an issue, not us, not others.
I would say this, it would be, I think, also a good idea to really tighten up our revenue situation, uh to make sure that our uh our harbor, for example, is at par, to make sure that all of our TRT revenues are at par.
So for the budgeting, it's coming up starting this month, so we're working on it.
Um so basically, what, do those reports that I provided, are they what you want to see, or are you looking for something else?
I've got a feeling I'm gonna be, let me take a look at these.
Okay.
Uh.
And just just, yeah, just tell me what you want, I will see if we can provide it, but there are some options that that we're doing.
Okay. I'm hoping that we can kind of access our own financial advisory committee here, because we don't, it's one of those committees that's kind of hard with the staff, so.
Right, we don't even have a ability to have it.
Okay, I apologize, thank you for letting me do that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
Um I don't have anything really for me, but I'd like to hear more about your radio interview today.
Oh, well, it was it was interesting, I had never done that before, and I was kind of quickening my boots. Um so basically, I just sat and we just chatted, and um.
So what is it, which station is it?
Uh Newport. It's something, Kate, something came, I I don't listen to the radio, so I'm sorry, I'm so embarrassed.
Kate, it's Pete.
Good.
Okay. But it's just an information thing, and she has, you know, she said she's been interviewing all the Newport um mayors and Representative Gomber and Senator Anderson, and so, you know, it's just an information type thing. And um she has never really learned about Deepak Bay, and so, you know, we were able to talk and chat about our oils and what we have to offer and our upcoming events, and so she's quite actually going to come to Deepak Bay, and I'm gonna give her a tour. She had no idea about our salmon being raised in our uh
reservoir.
Water reservoir and that type of thing, so it was just, um it just, we just had a chance.
It's good for Deepak Bay.
Yeah, and we're in, she was just thrilled with what she heard, and she wants to learn more, so I might get a chance to manage someone, so. So thank you, it was, thank you.
I know.
You have no goals?
No.
Come on, Brady.
Goals, I thought it was council concerns.
It is council concerns, if you read the finding, the description of twenty twenty three council.
Well, I really would like, I mean, I think we're getting on track if we start, you know, voting in on what we can do with grant money.
Right.
And um and I really would like to get more um probably contract time or other, also just kind of plan update and selling licenses update, and um I also like to see us get more resilient, maybe try to get a battery pack for energy storage as part of the AFC. So um yeah, there's a lot of things I, I've kind of put it on the grant list, because uh this basis says we don't have a lot of extra money floating around, but I think these things are all fungible.
Right, exactly, we research and go after them.
Yeah, yeah, today I was driving through Stonebridge, and a uh president who lives up there was asking if it'd be possible to get signs up there that says local traffic only, because I guess the big huge large trucks have been ripping through there, tearing all the roads.
Right. Trucks go through there, yeah. Right.
And actually, that was something I need to look into, and that's, you know, when I was out walking one day, somebody asked me, and I'm like, dude.
Oh, yeah.
And so um I need to check with Kit on that, to see what kind of signage we can do.
Yeah. I I told him to call Kit, I don't know if he called.
He had, he's working on this, he has had contact from some folks at Stonebridge, because he.
Oh, okay.
Oh, good, because he knows I'm with them, so um he's looking into this, right?
Thank you, cool.
Nipsey, I would like to tour the water thing.
Yeah?
Oh, yes, yeah.
That's your goal for twenty twenty three, you guys have a big.
Yeah.
We all wanna do it.
Yeah, Kimberly, what did you, did you, did you have the water plan with us?
Where?
Oh, you did, yeah. Yeah, okay. So.
The other thing I just wanted to ask is um for our combined city council planning board meeting, would there be uh like a packet that will go out to all of us ahead of time? And if so, could you, could be included in that, the the goals that we had set last year?
Yes. Yes, yeah.
Our strategic plan, yeah.
And and planning board might have specific information to them, we should see ahead of time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I honestly don't know if there will be a packet, Judy's saying no, but we can certainly include, we can make the strategic plans part of that.
Yeah, just so it's something, something to talk about. And if they have anything specific they want us to look at ahead of time.
I will also mention that. Thank you.
Okay, I guess we are, Judy, thank you very much.